Evening, everyone. Today is February 12th, and this is a joint meeting of the Planning Board and Select Board to fill the Planning Board vacancy. I would like to call the Planning Board to order.
Okay.
And I think Mitch, I'm sorry.
And I will call the Select Board to order, and I will read the remote meeting announcements. First, we are being recorded. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board and the Northborough Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023 relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board and Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows, I'll just say, both boards to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair, either of the chairs notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not interfere with public participation unless such participation is required by law, this meeting will not feature public comment. And Amy, do you want to go around the room and confirm that we can all hear and be heard?
Good. Um, when I call your name, please answer in the affirmative. Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Bill Pierce?
Here.
Julianne Hirsch?
Here.
Laura Zaitin? Did we say she's not here?
It's my assumption she is not here. She's not.
Okay. Lisa Moselli?
Here.
Mike Tishen?
Here.
Millie, are you there? I think Millie's in no too. And Amy, Kuretsky is in I, and Mitch Cullen?
I'm here.
Okay. Um, hi, everybody. So tonight's meeting has to do with the Planning Board vacancy that was created by Kerry Martinix leaving the board. I want to thank Kerry for all her years of service. She was on the board for over seven years. And we really appreciate all the time and dedication she gave to the board in the town. Her quick wit and friendly smile is something I know I will miss. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81A, in Town Charter 3-11B, the Planning Board and Select Board jointly appoint a citizen to the remainder of the term. The remainder of this term will be expiring in May 13th of 2025. The seat is up for election at this time with two years remaining. A notice of vacancy was published and applications were accepted. One application has been received, and it is from current ZBA board member Brad Blanchett. The Planning Board and Select Board will now interview applicants, and we expect to make an appointment tonight. I'll pass on to Mitch now to explain the procedure.
Great. So for the purpose of this meeting, as governed by the charter and all the good state laws that Amy talked about, we are meeting as one board. So we are, in theory, a 10-member board with one vacancy and a couple of people not here. We are not two separate boards. We are one. So that means that votes need to be a majority of the total number of members. So we need six votes in an affirmative to approve anything. We will keep one set of meeting minutes that each board individually can review and approve later. And we're going to be going through a process where each member of the combined board will have an opportunity to ask questions, and we're going to do that. Excuse me. We'll do those in alphabetical order by first name. That's already been determined. And then after the Q and A part of this, then we'll have an opportunity for deliberations. I think we're going to do that in reverse alphabetical order, just to be fair and/or fun. And of course, the candidate will have an opportunity to answer those questions and provide an opening statement. Amy?
Okay. So now I would like to introduce you to Brad Blanchett. Um, Brad, we received your application. We reviewed it. Can you please just tell us a little more about yourself and why you're interested in joining the Planning Board?
Yeah, sure. First off, thank you for having me tonight, and I just want to send a quick note to Kerry Marnik as well, thanking her for her time in service on the Planning Board. I think she did a phenomenal job, and it's a lot of big shoes to fill. But about myself, so name is Brad Blanchett. I live at 6 Rodney Terrace in Northborough, of course. I am pretty much a lifelong resident. My parents moved here in 1982. They're still residents, living on Davis Street, and decided to move back to start a family back in 2009. Since then, I've been a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals since 2014. So I am now the, the old guard, the old dinosaur on the ZBA, having the longest tenure there. Also, I'm very active in the community as far as coaching. I coach my son's basketball team. I coach my son's baseball team. Other times volunteering from time to time at Peaslee School for things like different activities. What else? The, not to do with Northborough, but also I've been a vestry member at St. Mark's Episcopal Church for a three-year term. One of the key things that I'm most proud of there is I actually worked with the Community Preservation Committee in Southborough to help secure $250,000 for their tower, their clock tower right in the front of that church, right on Main Street in Southborough. It actually won by literally one vote, which is crazy, but we were able to save that from being torn down because of safety concerns. One of the reasons why I've joined the Plane Board is I've been very interested in these town boards. I've been on the zoning board for quite some time, like I mentioned, and being, you know, listening to and the residents as well as following and adhering to the bylaws. One of the things about the zoning board, I may have said this in the past, is it's more a reactive view of the bylaws. So someone comes in with an application based on the bylaws, if they're looking for a variance, a special permit, and then we decide based on what's best for the town, the residents, and the applicant itself. The Planning Board is something that I have been interested in because it is more of a proactive approach. I think we're at a period in Northborough where we're in the middle of a big transition. There's a lot of development in the area, and what I want to do is be able to create bylaws or help have input in bylaws to make it a little more business-friendly, be a little more inviting to different developers and things like that. I know we've, we were all at the Economic Development Forum, whether you agree or disagree. I mean, we do have a reputation that it is somewhat difficult to work here. But I do think we're doing a good job. I think we're being really smart about our development. We're not just bringing everything in and then deal with it later. We're taking a very strategic approach to what we're bringing in. One of the ideas that I brought up, the Economic Development Forum, is a way to help grow our tax base without really compromising police, fire, and schools is the sports complexes. The examples I gave were the New England Hockey Complex in Marlboro. There's a basketball center in Sudbury. There's another basketball center down in Stoughton. And it's just a great way to bring people in, shop in town, perhaps stay, eat some dinner, and then just kind of leave at the end of the weekend or the end of a tournament. And it's helped relieve the tax burden on the residents, but also not, again, compromise municipal services. One of the other things as well, I've worked with the Planning Board multiple times. We always have meetings with that board, and which I really appreciate. It's really collaborative on discussing bylaws, things that we want to change, tweak, based on what we're hearing and what we're seeing from applicants, just to maybe streamline the process or make it be a little more user-friendly. But I have no plans on leaving the town of Northborough, and I want to continue to serve the town in any way I can. And I thought this was a great opportunity to kind of dip my toe into the Planning Board. I know it's interim. It's only a couple of months. My plan is to run in May. And if that is the case, then I would resign from zoning board. I think it's a lot on my plate. And I would like to keep my marriage. My wife may send divorce papers with all these meetings, but it's something that I'm really interested in. I thought this was a fantastic opportunity to jump in.
Great. Thank you very much, Brad. Before we move into Q and A, I actually have a question for David from Northborough Cable. We don't see the meeting livestreamed at the Northborough Remote Meetings. I want to confirm that we're at least being recorded so that it can be uploaded later. Okay, very good. As long as we're being recorded, people can view it later, and we'll deal with that. Thank you very much. Sorry for interrupting. We'll now start. We'll now start the, the questions and some answers. We will, as I said, go in alphabetical order. There are a lot of us here. It is perfectly fine. If you don't have a question, just say, I don't have a question, and that's totally, totally fine. We'll also loop around at the end and see if anyone has any follow-up. So in the order predetermined, Anthony, you're first.
Awesome. Welcome, Brad.
Hey, Anthony.
First of all, I've known Brad for a long time, seen you operate in town meetings, always participating, and in ZBA meetings. So I feel I have a pretty good understanding of where your head's at, the direction you'd like to see the town go in. And so I feel fairly comfortable with, you know, the kind of the common answers or questions you normally ask. So I came up with a couple of different, you know, maybe unfair questions, and if they're just like, I don't know what you're talking about, you just say that. Or I think whatever he's thinking. So the first thing on my mind is, in terms of the bylaws in the Planning Board, as it relates to the Planning Board and applications, do you think they're rigid rules, or should they, are they open for interpretation depending on the application?
Yeah, I mean, I think every application you look at has to kind of stand on its own. And some of the things that we take into account as far as looking at it from a different perspective is just looking at the impact it would have on, on the town, on the abutters. And sometimes we make decisions that aren't super popular, but we think it's in the best interest of the town. Other times, you know, we make popular decisions, but it may hold back an opportunity for Northborough to potentially grow. But I think they all should stand on their own, and you really have to take into account what our bylaws really state, and some bylaws do have room for interpretation. And so it's kind of our job to kind of sift through that, but also take in what we hear from recommendations from other boards, from the fire chief, the police chief. Another department I'd like to include would be Superintendent of Schools to see how that impacts schools as well, and make a thoughtful decision that everyone can live with, but it's, it leaves no room for interpretation on how we decide. I had something else to add. Oh, yeah, town staff. Also include town staff as well. I mean, those, those folks, Lori, Bob, and they're the experts on this. And so we really take into account their input and their opinion as well. So not making a decision on a whim, but really taking in all the facts and see what's in the best interest for all parties.
So kind of in the same vein, and I know you've been involved in a lot of things in town for the last many, many years. So there was, in my time here, which is seven years, and I think it's even longer. And Amy, you can confirm, but we've had three denials, application denials through the Planning Board. And which kind of confuses me why we're still known as Norborough, because really, most things do get approved and thoughtfully. And you're probably familiar with them. There was 222 West Main Street. There was 425 Whitney. What was the other one? Zero Bartlett Street, right? And do you think those decisions, those denials were valid, or do you think we went too far?
The two I'm, I'm most familiar with are the Bartlett and the Whitney Street. Actually, no, I am familiar with the other one as well. I, I, to be completely honest, I agreed with those decisions. I thought that Northborough, especially on that Bartlett area, got a little too big, too fast, and talking about how we're just bringing in growth, bringing in development, but we really didn't think, or the Planning Board, everyone didn't really think long-term the impact with Algonquin right there, the aqueduct that's going through, things like that. So we had to take a little bit of a pause, I think, to slow down and look at what the impact was. Whitney was, I believe, was the Starris property. So that was something that came in front of the ZBA. And it was approved by a slim margin, by one, I think it was one vote, maybe. And, and that was, that's an area of town that is very controversial, and a lot of the residents were pretty upset about, you know, different things that are happening down there. And so that was something where they could, they really didn't prove a hardship for that variance. I mean, they were talking about money, but that's really not a hardship, and that organization's large enough where we can kind of see that that wasn't a hardship. And I think the impact that could have made on the neighbors was way worse than just bringing in and adding extra revenue to the town. Is the other one, is that at the corner of, is it Lincoln and Main Street? Was that the other denial?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was a period too where the duplexes were kind of getting out of hand, and everyone was coming in asking for a duplex. And so a lot of these neighborhoods with single-family homes were trying to make money, and I don't fault them for that, to see if they could create duplexes. Looking at our tax base, single-family homes are the largest revenue of taxes beyond apartments, condos, duplexes. And one of the things that I want to bring to this board is think about the character and the small New England town charm that Northborough is, but also be smart about the growth and not just have a hodgepodge of different types of dwellings along the street. And by right, the applicant was able to put in single-family homes, and so it's not like a complete denial, like, no, you can't build on this land. It's, okay, we're not going to allow this, but you can still do that. And so I agreed with that decision as well. And we even put a moratorium on duplexes right around that time as well, because it was, it was a really hot button issue at that time.
In this one, you may, if you say I've got nothing, I totally agree with that. If you could just make a wish and add, change, delete a bylaw, would you have anything that you'd want to do, just even this year, that you could just, you could just make it be?
So an application that we just heard on King Street, it originally came as Assisted Living. And the applicant tried to turn it around and create it as more just a high-dense apartment complex. The applicant did do some research for surrounding towns, and it does seem it's a bit easier to create not just assisted living, but nursing homes, something like that, because we do have an aging population. And they, a lot of them, my parents included, kind of need to get out of their home, but they still want to stay in the area. And so there is certainly a need for that, but that has to be within reason, the X number of units per acre. Is there going to be 24/7 care, things like that? So I would probably add a little more to that bylaw just because of the different types of assisted living facilities that are being created. And going back to what you were saying, Anthony, a question ago, that bylaw did leave a lot of room for interpretation. And so perhaps cleaning up some of the verbiage in that bylaw, but also look at some of the surrounding towns and see if we can make it a little bit easier. Again, it would put more stress on fire and EMT, but not necessarily impact the schools, which is, I think, in my personal opinion, why I came back, is the main driver of why people want to move to Northborough.
Right, great. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Anthony. Bill, you're up next. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, I do. Brad, thank you for applying. Thank you for all the, the work you've done in, you know, for the town of Northborough already, and I appreciate you, you know, stepping up in this case as well.
Thank you.
You know, I have watched a lot of ZBA meetings. I've seen a lot of, of you in the meetings as well as all of your counterparts. I have two questions that are in reference to your ZBA work, and then a third question of something a little bit different. So what in your mind is the toughest decision you've had to make on the ZBA?
The toughest decision, the first thing that comes to mind is probably the Rice Ave, the dog park on Rice Ave. Because dog parks are something that are popping up all over the place. We have a dog park being built, I believe, on Boundary Street right now. And it was just a gentleman who was wanted to grow his business, use his home as a business. He did have a lot of land. However, the Rice Ave is a very narrow road. It's a very busy road, and adding any more traffic to that, I thought would have been detrimental to the neighborhood. But I like dogs. I don't have dogs, but I like them. And, you know, a lot of people have dogs. I mean, we, we just approved like a dog grooming place at the Old Dawn School of Dance that moved right near the Legion. But to kind of just deny this, this guy, his application, even though this was something he's super passionate about, was very difficult to do.
Great answer. Thank you. Second question. So a lot of times in the Planning Board and in the ZBA, you go into a meeting with one idea of a, you know, what you're going to be viewing, and then, you know, sometimes you either get blown away or, you know, your idea of what you came into the meeting with completely changes. So can you give an example of one time where you came into a meeting with one idea and changed your mind in the middle of the meeting on how you were going to vote?
Yeah, so actually, right across the street from, what was, from the new fire station, actually. It was an old house with a, like a wraparound farmer's porch, and it was an applicant that wanted to put in apartments. And it used to be used as a place of business, and going in, I wanted to keep it as a place of business. I didn't want any changes being made to the house. There were some issues in the back with conservation as well, and normally before folks go in front of the ZBA, they meet with conservation, design review, they check all the boxes. This individual did not want to, did not meet, and wasn't playing on me with conservation. And so I wanted to check that box and make sure they gave the go-ahead to make some changes to the impervious surface around the back. So in my mind, I was going into that meeting with a no vote, and then listening to the story, listening to both sides, I decided that, okay, well, if a yes vote would require from me, would require you to go in front of conservation. We continued the meeting. They went in front of conservation, conservation gave it the thumbs up, and I decided to approve it. It wasn't that, oh, God, I lost my train of thought. But I mean, when you think of apartments and you think of diverse housing, apartments are a great way for that. And I do believe they belong in downtown, but as long as they do everything correctly and go by the book and check all the boxes with the boards, then that's a good idea for me. But if they did push back and say, no, we're not going to be with conservation, but everyone else has, then I probably would have stayed with my no vote, but I did switch.
Nice, nice. Okay, switching topics just a little bit. Affordable housing is a big topic in the state right now. I don't know if you're familiar or not, but Shrewsbury actually has an unfriendly 40B that's in front of their planning board right now, about 300 units. So one of the things I was looking at is our, as you know, you know, you get under 10% of affordable housing, and that's when you can get the unfriendly 40Bs. Based on the last 30 years of data, we will be under that 10% in about 10 years. So what we, what would you suggest that the town do to make sure that we do not get under that 10%?
Yeah, that's, so that's definitely a hot topic, and I did do some research on this a few years ago around the master plan time. And yes, we are over 10%. We are getting close to that 10% mark. But this was back in 2019. I mean, I think we were one of maybe two dozen towns that were above that 10% threshold, which I think is great, and I want to make sure we stay above that 10% because of the unfriendly 40Bs. Shrewsbury is a town that I do keep a close eye on. I have to drive my daughter up and down Route 20 to her cheer, and there's apartment buildings going up left and right. And people are kind of like, whoa, 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 you know, things are getting out of control, but they're still not at that 10% threshold. So there's going to be major trouble there. One of the things, actually going back to the King Street application, is when he came back to revise his initial application, one of the things that we said was, okay, we'll definitely take on our consideration, but we would like to see 40B units in that complex. And I think that's something now that the ZBA is taking a close look at is as far as, okay, if you want to do duplex, well, we don't do duplex anymore, but if you want to put in apartments, things like that, townhouses, whatever it may be, then you need to set aside some. I think that's something now, and going forward, it sounds like everyone is on board with that to keep us above the 10%, but also keep diverse housing inventory in town.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Julianne, any questions for Brad?
I have no questions. My questions have been answered by previous answers, and just thank you, Brad, for stepping up. And great questions, Anthony.
Making me think.
Lisa, Lisa, any questions?
Well, hi, Brad, and everybody. I'm very glad that you, you came forward to help the board with its little opening right now. I know that's something that you've had, had your eye on for quite some time. I have watched you, and you've certainly been a good member of the community and putting your time in and your thoughtfulness in, and I thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
I think we've had some pretty good questions. It's hard when you know somebody well to throw questions that you haven't already discussed at some point in time. And I'm very comfortable with you being one of our new Planning Board members. So if anything goes well, I can't wait to welcome you in.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Mike, any questions?
No, I don't think I have any, any questions at this time. Just, just want to thank Brad for, for stepping up and throwing his hat in the ring for the, for the opening on the Planning Board. But yeah, I think the questions that have been asked thus far are pretty tough. I'm glad I didn't have to interview for my Select Board position. Not sure how I would have fared, but, but I'm all set.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Amy, any questions?
Totally agree. Great job, Brad. Those are tough questions. Good job, Anthony and Bill, thinking of some pretty tough questions. And I was thinking the same thing. Glad I'm not in that spot. My only question, though, for Brad would be is we have an application in front of us on Tuesday, and they're hoping for a five-member board. So if you did get approved tonight to be on the board, would you be able to attend our meeting on Tuesday night?
Yes, yes, the answer is yes. I will be in Phoenix for work, and I don't do a lot of travel for work, but yeah, I'll definitely be on Zoom for Tuesday night if I get allowed or get invited to join the board.
Thanks. And Lori will follow up with you if you get approved, but I guess we just have to have you watch. There was one meeting that was like a half an hour, 45 minutes. And you'd have to watch that meeting, but, but thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Great. Thank you. I also don't have any questions, but I, Brad, I will repeat, thank you very much. I have watched a number of zoning board meetings. I really appreciate your, your thoughtful insight and good questions that you ask on that board, and I'm confident you'll continue in that way if appointed tonight to the Planning Board. Are there any, I don't think I missed anybody. Did I miss anyone? Is there anyone that has any follow-up questions or any additional questions they would like to ask Brad? Seeing none, the Q and A section of this evening is complete. Brad, you're welcome to stay on the meeting, but now is the time where we talk about you, sort of behind your back, although you can, you can still watch.
Does Brad have any questions for us?
Reasonable question, sure.
One of the questions, yeah, so I'm used to the fourth Tuesday of every month for ZBA. The zoning, Planning Board meets twice a month. Is it the first and third Tuesday? Of every month?
Yes. Yep.
And then I did see a meeting, a joint meeting for next, yeah, and it's Tuesday with the ZBA go over bylaws. So I took a look at the bylaws. Everything that you guys are doing or improving makes total sense, and just, you know, cleaning some things up and helping move Northburn in the right direction. But as far as that, that's, that's all I really have for you guys. Like I said, I've, you know, worked with you guys in the past, so I'm familiar with how you operate, and I think you guys are doing a great job, Select Board and Planning Board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Amy.
Since there are no more questions or comments, now is time to deliberate, but we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order. So it gets tricky for me and ask if anybody else has any comments or statements. And um. I will start with Mike Tejan.
So it, actually Amy, is it okay if I jump off? I do have to run to a court game. Okay, otherwise I would stick around, but I'll. Well, I'll listen, I'll watch YouTube later to see what you guys say about me.
Brad, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. Appreciate the time.
Thanks for coming, Brad.
Thanks. Okay, so now we'll go in reverse alphabetical order. To see if anyone else has any more comments or statements, anything to deliberate. And I'll start with board members and then follow up with Mitch and I last. So um, Mike Tejan, do you have anything else you want to add or deliberate? Any input about Brad?
Sure, I, I, I mean, I, I clearly, I, I think Brad is, is um, is qualified to be on the planning board. Um, just from what I've seen and uh, I mean, just from his, you know, the way he answered questions here on this call. Um, even if I didn't know other things and, and seen other meetings that he's attended. Um, so. I don't have any concerns. Um, you know, I, I like that he's planning on running for the position. Um. Permanently, uh, you know, well, you know, so we'll, uh, we'll see kind of where that goes. Um. But yeah, no, I don't, I don't have any other input other than that.
Thank you. Lisa, how about you?
Well, I, I want to reiterate that I think we're very lucky to have somebody with his expertise and experience. Um, move from one board to the next and continue with his volunteerism. Um, I guess somebody else here is giving their opinion as well. So um, I, I think we'd be very lucky to have him. I'm glad he's able to uh spend the extra day. Um, on meetings that he was a little concerned about and I think that uh he's, he'd be a great addition to the uh, the planning board. I know you all work really hard to, to think about everybody, right? It's not just a one or the other. I think there's a lot of concerns and. Personally, I think there's a, a little bit more water issues and things like that, that and sewer that we're going to start. Running into causing some problems for us, but um, but I think the thoughtfulness and the research. Um, that goes into your meetings, um. Are wonderful and I, and I want to thank you all for that.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, Julianne, do you have anything to add? Any deliberation?
Uh, I, he has my one hundred percent support. I, I've always enjoyed Brad's comments at, at town meeting. There he's, he's just honest and frank and clear. Um. And I, I think that Brad really has his pulse on, on the community. It's, you know, the, what the residents are, are. Are feeling and thinking, so I, he'll be a great asset, especially with his experience on ZBA.
Yeah. Um, Bill, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, uh, Julianne said it perfectly, right? Um, his experience on ZBA, I think is, is going to be. Uh, is going to help the planning board. Um, it's not like somebody coming in fresh, not knowing anything about. You know, even how some of this stuff works. Um, so I think, you know, him being able to jump right in and, and right into that meeting on Tuesday, I think it's going to be huge for us. Um. Plus, you know, he knows his stuff, um, obviously from the questions we threw at him and he was, you know, right there answering the question. So. No, I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind him.
Thank you. How about you, Anthony?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just to mirror what everybody said. I'm very comfortable with, with Brad. Um, he brings a wealth of knowledge with his experience. Uh, I really appreciate his participation, certainly in town meetings. He's, I think he's always spoken at every meeting and almost every issue. Uh, which is great. And I think he'd be a great addition to the planning board.
Thank you. Um, Mitch?
Um, just echoing what, what has been said, we are so lucky. That when someone uh who's been such uh an important member of the planning board leaves. That we have somebody waiting in the wings uh to, to join right in. Obviously, a vacancy appointment. You never really know what applications you're going to get. It all happens very quickly and we are very, very lucky. That uh, that Brad was willing to step forward and put in an application for this tonight. I very strongly support his candidacy.
Thanks. Uh, I agree with everything that's been said also. I think Brad will bring some great ideas to the planning board. To have being on the ZBA and with the applications that they see, that some of them are a little different than ours. But he could help with ideas for bylaws by what has come through the ZBA. I also, you know, his ten years on the ZBA. And um, like everyone said, all the input he gives at town meeting. So I'm excited to have Brad joining us. Should he get the vote tonight, but it looks like it's going that way. So that's all I have.
Great. Um, so now is the time where we ask for a motion. Um, I, in the email that I think you've all seen, uh, there was a draft motion in that. Would someone like to, to read that? If not, I can read the motion and someone can do a so moved.
Please.
Okay, um, the motion would be that we move to vote to appoint Brad Blanchett to the planning board. For a term to end on the date of the next regular town election, as per the Northborough Town Charter, Article Three, Section eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll give the motion to Julianne in a second. I think I heard both Mike and Bill at the same time. I'll give it to Bill so that. Uh, members of each board have a, have a stake in this. Um, uh, or is there any discussion? Okay, um, roll call vote in alphabetical order. Anthony?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Amy? Amy, okay, didn't hear it. And I also vote, I vote as unanimous in favor. Uh, Brad has been appointed, uh, pending, obviously has been sworn in. Um. We have no other business as a joint board or at this meeting tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Did I hear a second after that?
Second.
Okay, great. Um, all those in favor? Uh, oop, sorry, Amy, I stole your, your thunder by asking.
Okay, you can finish it up.
All right, let's, let's do the vote in reverse alphabetical order. Um, Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
I also vote, I vote as unanimous in favor. We were adjourned at six fourteen PM. Thank you very, very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Bye bye. Thanks, David.